Good evening, we will now call the regular Fairfield County Council meeting to order. Second item on the agenda is approval of the agenda for June 25th, 2018. Do I hear a motion?
It's been moved, Madam Chair.
Seconded.
It has been motion and seconded that we accept the agenda for tonight. Next item on the agenda is invocation by Councilman member. Oh, excuse me. All in favor, excuse me, thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We hear none. Motion carries six zero to accept the agenda. Next item on the agenda is Councilmember Douglas doing our invocation for tonight.
Dear Lord, please help our Vice Chairman Bertha Goins conduct business as usual and assist Billy and Rachel so they may have an easy transition in their search for a new home. I know everyone on the council thanks Chairman Smith for all his hard work and excellent decisions with your guidance. Praise be to your name. Amen.
Amen, amen. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Douglas. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes at regular scheduled meeting on June 11th, 2018. Do I hear a motion?
It's been moved and properly seconded.
Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We hear none. Motion carries seven to six to zero. Next item on the agenda is public presentations. We have none. Next item, first public comment session. Ms. Davis, please.
We have one speaker tonight, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on annual review.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway, Fairfield County. Annual review, first of all, it should say, if you want to get banged for the buck, annual performance review to fully hold your administrator and cascade it down to his entire government team, to send a message that you're looking at performance. Annual review is just kind of a neutral thing. Performance review is an accountability thing. But more importantly, if it's a typical government and many businesses, nonprofits, performance review, it includes things like, that has character traits and skill traits like knowledge and ability to communicate and ability to work with people, build teams. And that's all good. But what it usually doesn't include is things that really matter to us. It doesn't include performance, true performance measurements and metrics. For example, why not include in the performance annual review for Mr. Taylor, who by the way, I think is a fine hire, so none of this is negative about him. So, performance review for Mr. Taylor should include, for example, improvement in the county's standing in unemployment within the state. In other words, right now, we're forty-sixth in unemployment in the state, and if he got, we would set a goal for him to at least make us thirty-sixth best in unemployment rate in the state. Now, you're going to say, well, he can't control everything, but he can, but, but the government has a lot to do with that, and so do you guys. That's a, that's, that's, that's a starting point. And then he would cascade that down to his development team. On another end, you might put down there to increase our particip- county, participation in county recreation activities by ten percent over the previous year. That's measurable. That's, that's accountable. And then Jason would subsequently cascade that down to our recreation team. And as you see, you can get measurable performance standards. For Jason, fine young man, utilizes talents, pushing to get real results that impact us. I don't see Jason's results per se because he has job skills. What I see is his results by getting those job skills leveraged for lower unemployment, higher incomes, other outcomes that impact us. You can use the county health rankings for many of these performance measurements. Start with Jason, cascade him down, use the goals that you give Jason for your own goals for the next year. Thanks.
That concludes segment one.
Next on the agenda is public hearing. An ordinance to amend Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance Number 599 to provide for the zoning reclassification from R1 Single Family Residential District to RD1 Rural Residential District of four acres owned by Edward and Bonnie Sanders. Advocate is Edward and Bonnie Sanders. Tax map number 093-00-00-026-00. Property is located at 1783 Dorm Place Road. We open this hearing at 6:10. Is, is there anyone?
No one signed to speak.
Okay. We will now close this hearing at 6:10. Next item on the agenda is ordinances, resolutions, and orders. Third and final reading, ordinance number 701. An ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance Number 599 to provide for the zoning reclassification from R1 Single Family Residential District to RD1 Rural Residential District of four acres owned by Edward and Bonnie Sanders. Advocate is Edward and Bonnie Sanders. Tax map number 093-00-00-026-000. Property is located at 1783 Dorm Place Road. Do I have a motion for ordinance number 701?
It's been moved.
It has been moved and properly seconded on ordinance number 701. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Taylor, I think at a previous meeting, you might have explained the reason for the change. Can you explain again tonight?
Yes, let me, I'll have our planning director get up and give you a full presentation on this. It has been properly noticed, it has gone for the planning commission, and they have recommended approval of this. But as far as the details, let me get Mr. Clausen to go over those again with you.
Okay, good evening, council.
Good evening.
This request is pretty straightforward. This was one of the parcels that when we went through the rezoning countywide, it was rezoned to the, the R1, which would prohibit a single-wide mobile home. In this case, the applicants are requesting to locate a single-wide mobile home. They're actually up in New Jersey, and they're here tonight as well. So it really, the comprehensive plan and the future land use map would allow the rezoning for, to be RD1. And so the planning commission saw that. There were no, there were no requests against it. Actually, a number of the landowners in immediate proximity called in and said that they were fine with that. So they went through the planning commission with a, I think there were four that night, so four oh vote in favor.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
All right, thank you.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We hear none. Motion carries six zero to accept ordinance number 701. Next item, there are three items on the agenda, and they're all first reading, there is no discussion with them, and by title only. First reading by title only, ordinance number 700. An ordinance authorized in Fairfield County to add new fees for the 2018-2019 fiscal year. Do I have a motion?
It's been moved and properly seconded.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. First reading by title only, ordinance number 702. An ordinance to amend the budget ordinance for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2019, and authorizing the supplemental appropriation of funds. Do I have a motion?
It has been moved and properly seconded.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We hear none. Motion carries six to zero. First reading by title only, ordinance number 703. An ordinance to amend the master agreement governing the I-77 corridor Regional Industrial Park by and between Richland County, South Carolina, and Fairfield County, South Carolina, to expand the boundaries of the park to include certain real property located in Richland County Project Rain and other related matters. Do I have a motion?
It's been moved and properly seconded.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We hear none. Motion carries six to zero. Next on the agenda, there is a resolution number 2018-05. It will be deferred until after executive session. Next item on the agenda is Board and Commission Minutes. We have two, Behavioral Health and Board of Disabilities will like to have a motion for the two of these, please.
It's been moved, Madam Chair.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye to accept Behavioral Health and Board of Disabilities Minutes.
Aye.
Opposed? We hear none. Motion carries six to zero. Board and Commission appointments, we have none. Old business, none. New business, we have none. County administrators report. Mr. Taylor, please.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few items tonight. First, I wanted to update council on the pool project. We had worked with the town of Windsboro in redoing the old pool that was there. It is now open. I think it's been open for about two weeks, from what I can see. I went swimming in it myself last week. They've done a good job on the pool. It looks nice. And I think they've been averaging about a hundred children a day there, from what I understand. So it's being well-used. We'll look forward to, currently, as the agreement was done, the town is managing it this year. We will move into managing it next year, and we'll probably make some changes in how it's used. But again, it's finished, and they've done a nice job with it.
Thank you.
The next item I have is a request of action that had been before committee at the last, or one of the committees previously, and this is to pre-qualify contractors to perform historic work at the county museum. We budgeted money last year, and we've budgeted money again in this upcoming fiscal year to do some work at the library. The library, or not the library, the museum. Museum is very specific work because of historic structure. So we hired a group called the Boudreaux Group, which is a consultant that does a lot of work restoring historic structures. Now we have to, we've got the consultant, now we actually need contractors who are accustomed to doing that kind of work. And so we work with Boudreaux to pre-qualify, so we don't have to bid out every item that's done to the museum. And they have recommended that Huss Inc., Mar Construction, Solid Structures, and SRM be granted indefinite delivery contracts for the next five years to do work at the museum. And that's what we're bringing to council for your approval.
If they're the only ones approved, how would we be sure that we're getting a proper bid on the job?
Again, we would bid it amongst them possibly, and then we'd have Boudrea Group review their
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Oh, excuse me. Excuse me. At this time, the item B was a request of action to pre-qualify contractors to perform historic work at the county museum. Administration and Finance Committee recommends approval. Do I have a motion?
It's been moved.
Seconded.
And there has been discussion, and therefore, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We hear none. Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Before, I don't have it on the agenda, but if you wouldn't mind, I'd love to have Russell Price, our Recreation Director, get up and make a few comments about his department.
Of course.
Very good things occur in the Recreation Department, and I wanted to recognize them.
Good evening, thanks for having me today. I want to first introduce Lucas Vance, who is my athletic coordinator and has done a fantastic job. I want to go over a couple of things with you, really give you an update and thanks. We had a very busy weekend. Luke took our 12 U and 10 U All-Stars to North Augusta to play at Riverview Park. We had a great time there. Luke did a fantastic job. We played teams. We played in the South Carolina RBI, which is the South Carolina Recreational Baseball Initiative. It was designed for recreation departments, try to get away from travel ball teams and stuff like that, where organizations were set up just for travel ball teams. So we played Chapins, Irma, Mount Pleasant, North Augusta, Aiken, Daniel Island, City of Newberry, City of Columbia, and several other ones. Our 12 U ended up going six and oh, playing three games on Sunday in a hundred-degree weather. It was a group of kids that have been playing together for a long time and had some success, but they overcame that hump and really made a difference in keeping it together and bringing home in a championship for us. The 10 U went and competed and competed with class. Their wins and losses weren't probably what they wanted, but that was okay. We handled ourselves well there, and just excited that those kids had an opportunity to go there as well. I went with the 8 U team, which played at Melvin Park in Chapin. We played a machine pitch All-Star Tournament, which is new. We have never had a machine pitch here. When we implemented our baseball program, we decided we want to try to keep up with the times of other places, and we didn't even keep score during the regular season. But we, we went to Melvin Park with, I think it was five seven-year-olds and seven eight-year-olds. We also took three coaches that actually played for me coming up, and none of the coaches had kids on the team. They just want to give back to Fairfield County. You know, and back to the 12 U real quick, that was Chuck Rayly who head coached that team, and he had a couple of his former players, Eric White, Jarrett Douglas, that helped him coach along with Rick Sly. So we're, we're happy with them. And Pete Watkins and Steve Rayly and Cameron Pearson coached the 10 U team. The 8 U team was led by Larry Perry, McKendrick Thompson, and Trow Hazen. They went five and oh on the weekend, actually played three games in a hundred-degree weather, which is pretty impressive for seven and eight-year-olds to be able to handle that. And it was exciting time, had to go extra innings, but we got the win and brought home another trophy. So I just want to give you an update, and none of this would be possible without y'all's support, because y'all are giving us the tools to make things better. That's why you see our increase in numbers, because our fields. Luke can tell you, we don't have the multi-million dollar fields, but when you go take infield, our infields are as good as anywhere. We don't have the parking and the towers and all that, but we've got something special here. And if it wasn't for you all being able to provide those things for us, we wouldn't be here. So I wanted to give you an update, thank you, and if Mr. Taylor and council extend the invite for recognition, I can, on behalf of Fairfield County Parks and Recreation, we'll accept the invite to come see you, and we'll fill this place up with a bunch of fine young men, parents, the, the, the support of the community. Luke was telling us how many people drove from Windsboro just to see it. They didn't even have kids playing. I can, you know, testify to Chapin, just to see some people that just came just to support Fairfield County. So I want to thank you again, and thank Luke personally, because it's, it's, it's a relief for me to have somebody like him on staff where I know that it's going to be taken care of in North Augusta, and I'm not on pins and needles, having to dial him, how's things going, and know it's being taken care of. So thank you, Luke, and thank you, council, for all y'all have done for Parks and Recreation.
Well, congratulations, that's outstanding. We all were texting and talking about it the other day, and just proud of you, Luke, and all, all your help and volunteers, and all the kids, and how well they've done. Look forward to all y'all coming here, and so we can be great.
I'll DJ with David Fancen.
I might want to see some of those texts. Mr. Price, thank you and your staff for everything that you're doing.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, I just want to thank Mr. Price as well. I think Recreation Department is definitely on, up and upcoming, down to the uniforms, to the participation. I think it's definitely well-received in this county as of now. I received a lot of texts and phone calls from both sides trying to keep me updated as well. So I just, I definitely want to see them in, in council chambers to congratulate them all, so.
We'll be happy to come, and we were the best dressed, no doubt. Might need to put in a budget for a bigger trophy, Kay Stone. Thank y'all. Mr. Price, I would also like to thank y'all, and also the coaches and the players, and congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Price.
Yes, and thank you so very much. I piggyback on what everybody's saying. I got in on the texting too, because I was excited. Thank you all so much.
Thank y'all.
At this time, we'll have a clerk to council report.
Just a reminder, council, the intergovernmental meeting hosted by the council is this Wednesday, June 27 at 6 o'clock at Midlands Tech Campus, Midlands Tech College, Fairfield Campus.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Okay, second public comment session.
We have four speakers. First, are you still speaking?
I'm good.
Okay. Three speakers, Mr. Jeff Schaefer, speaking on a vision, question mark.
Some people chickened out, didn't sign the name, huh? First of all, I congratulate Bertha on a job well done while I was gone. I had nothing to do with it, but you saved the county and the town grief with annexing Jenkinsville. Thank you. You're wonderful. Okay, good evening, council. I'm going to try to not run over my three minutes, however, I have a few things I really think are important, and I believe everyone else seated here tonight will agree. I was on vacation last week in Alaska. Huge country, beautiful, visually to see the wildlife and the mountains, just like Fairfield. Huge open spaces, hundreds of miles of land, and like Alaska, very few residents. Except for the fact that I noticed in Alaska, the towns are set up to promote growth and opportunity for all the residents, including the Native Indians and the Eskimos, and even a few white settlers and African-Americans. Everyone living there is living in harmony and making their environment productive and healthy. You can't fish in waters that are polluted. You can't grow a town when you don't have a transit system, or a good school system, or industry that will hire them. And you won't bring in outsiders unless you have something to offer them. So I ask you tonight, what do you have planned to offer business and people to come here? Here, I mean Fairfield, Windsboro, the surrounding towns. I want to know what the vision is. I just want you folks to tell us what we can expect to see during the next ten years, and God willing, I'll still be here, and that there is going to be what? Please be specific. What is not so difficult? We all know the root of the problems. It's not a secret. In business, when you have a dead inventory or an item not moving, you cut your losses quick. In politics, when you have a serious problem or the wrong person in place, you give them a pay raise. Hire a consultant and make an excuse. I'd like to hear the results of something positive. Even better, I'd like to see the result. I predicted when Mr. Heinley sat in that seat that we would witness Windsboro becoming a ghost town. I hope that doesn't happen. If we didn't get our act together and stop spending and planning money we don't have in our bank account. And that is why we threw every single council member to the wolves in the last few elections. And trust me, if I have anything to do with it, we'll do it again, until we get people who are willing to stop talking and start doing. I'm going to take my seat, wait for your rebuttal. Oh, and I hope one of these weeks, you're actually going to move that camera and move this podium, so that the people at home don't get this lousy message of cutting a speaker's head off. Sorry for being direct and frank, but that's all the time I had, and that's how I talk. Good night.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Moses Bell, speaking on Library Plus.
Moses Bell, Ridgeway, District One. On Friday of last week, I received a call from this lady. Name is not important, but she was unknown to me at the time. She, she said she had been trying to contact me, and she was quite bothered, really frustrated. She stated that, and I'm trying to use her words here, she stated that the county officers and administration was trying desperately to do something in Ridgeway before November. I'm being kind here. Her words were, they are in a frenzy to get things done. After listening to her for quite some time, she finally told me her concerns. Her concern was placing the library near the liquor store. She had stated that in many municipalities, they have ordinances stating the distance a liquor store or bar could be located to a public building. I called Mr. Taylor to inquire the facts on Friday to make sure I understood the issue before dropping to conclusions. I want to thank him for his response to my call. As most of you know, I have advocated for a library in Ridgeway. However, I'm asking you all to consider the location and do nothing in haste without addressing the concerns of the community. Let me be clear, though. I am in favor of a library in Ridgeway. With that, I have a proposal I will give to council, and Ms. Davis has already done so, that to the administration tonight, that the recreation center and the library in Ridgeway. The key of this proposal is consolidation. It includes the recreation center, the library, walking paths, green space with Wi-Fi connect. By doing it this way, it improves efficiency, increases utilization, and reduces costs to operate. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them offline. But again, I want you to look at the proposal. I think it probably fits everything in there. And if you look at the bottom part, because part of the, part of the proposal is some long-term thinking in there. So again, I hope that you look at it and take it into serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on Pretty Sidewalks.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway, Fairfield County. First, I have a question on the county Facebook page, is some seventy-six, eighty slides about sidewalks in Windsboro. And I know there's been some meetings here in, actually, the administration building. What is that about? Actually, it's not a bad idea. Spruce up Windsboro downtown and around Mount Zion. The sidewalks, I think we pretty much have sidewalks downtown, but maybe some sidewalks in the contingency from the town. But what is that about? Do you guys know what, it's on, it's on, it's on the county Facebook page about, two meetings so far, about sidewalk, and, and a consultant team named Alta has been conducting these surveys and meetings. And you know, if it's a consulting team, they're getting big bucks to do it. So what's going on there? You know, Jeff asked about a vision. What's the vision of these sidewalks? I agree, downtown Ridg-, Windsboro needs sprucing, but I don't know what, it doesn't say anything, it just has all these pictures and that sort of thing. So if you could clue us in on what the Pretty Sidewalks of Windsboro, and also, in, in, as a Ridgeway resident, we, we've had delay after delay, because let's put it here, let's put it there. We're, we're kind of paralyzed. We keep coming up with new ideas where to put stuff, and then we don't get it. I think we need to move, just move forward. Sometimes I think we're paralyzed as a, as a council by the FCC syndrome. Remember, or FFCC syndrome. Remember, that's where we made a fifty-million-dollar bet on a three-legged horse called VC Summer. And obviously, that three-legged horse didn't even get out of the gate, and we're left holding the bag of fifty million dollars. I think sometimes county council may be paralyzed by that colossal mistake, and we, we overthink things. Now, I'm not saying that his proposal is bad, but it's kind of at the last minute, and we, how many last-minute proposals are we going to address? And how many more delays? Mount Zion's another example. You know, we keep looking at things, and then we come up with new proposals, and we could drag these out forever. And then we can brand consultants, and let's try this, let's try that. But none of these new proposals have cost. But none of these new proposals have cost to them. Thanks.
Thank you. That concludes segment two.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. At this time, we have county council time. Is there anyone? Yes, Mr. Pauling.
I just have a question for Mr. Bell. Is this the town of Ridgeway? Is that?
No, sir. That's the three acres of land that's in Ridgeway, um, or more, Highway 21, son.
I just wanted to comment about the Facebook sidewalks. That's the walkable Windsboro thing we've been promoting. I'm not sure if you remember the previous two meetings, but it should be on Facebook as well. Try to unify. It's through DHEC, it's a DHEC grant, so we'll get together later after the meeting, talk about it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wilson.
Okay, yeah, that land is the, is beside the recycling center?
Yes.
Just past Smallwood Road. Yeah, okay, that's, yeah. Anyway, let me, just to explain a little bit about that, there's been a library in which most of them are, exist inside the municipalities all over, and there's been one in Ridgeway. I'm 61, has been in one there longer than that, but I know there's been one there that long. And we've, we looked and looked, I've been looking for months for a good location. The one that was in was in, and actually was in a, prior was a liquor store, the one that it previously was in. But the building was leaking, had mold issues, and they moved out. So we've been looking for another option, and this one came available, this on-ground level entrance, doesn't have two steps. And actually, there's a road and a cyclone fence before you get to the convenience store that has a liquor store attached to it. There's also a church behind the liquor store, right directly behind it. I just, I don't think that would be an issue. And also, we've been talking with the town of Ridgeway about all this too, and the long-term plan is, is something else in a, in a different location. But if we, if we were to build something, there would have to be grant applications and all this for, but that is in the plan for the long term. This is a temporary plan, been without a library for about a year now, so we don't want to wait two or three or four more years before we can get another permanent site. This is a temporary location.
Excuse me. If you would discuss later, please. Thank you.
And just one or two other things. I wanted to congratulate Patty. She completed the South Carolina Clerk to Counsel Certification Program, and she does an outstanding job for us, and I appreciate all you do. And also, Vice Chair Goins, you've done an outstanding job tonight, and I commend you and I thank you. You've done a great job tonight. Thank you.
Thank you all for your support. Is there anyone else?
I have some. Madam Chair, I have a question for the administrator. I received a correspondence from the town of Jenkinsville dated October the 14th, 2017, where there was requesting help from the county to help with the town hall and the library. And I was wondering, why wasn't this information passed on to council members?
We did receive that request. We received other requests before the rules were put in place, and at that time, we didn't move anything forward until the rules were put in place. Then we had requests come back in, and we have talked with the mayor, and we're willing to take that request and move it back forward and give it to the chair now that the rules are in place to allocate that money. If you remember, we allocated the money in the budget, but we didn't put any rules as far as how to distribute that money. It took us a while to get those rules put in place. We do have those in place now. I've talked to other council members about this particular request, and we will be trying to move it forward now.
That's all I have.
Thank you. At this time, it's time for executive session. The following statement is provided in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. Subsequent to executive session, counsel may take action on matters discussed in executive session. And we have three items for discussion tonight. A legal matter, update on litigation against SCANA and S C E N G in reference to the abandoned VC Summer nuclear project. Proposed contractual matter, discussion regarding the potential purchase of real property identified as Fairfield County TMS number 126-03-01-001-00. Third item, personal matter, discussion regarding the annual review of the county administrator and clerk to counsel. The fourth item, a legal matter, received information regarding pending litigation from former employee. May I have a motion to enter into executive session?
No move, Madam Chair.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. We go into executive session. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? I hear none. The motion carries six to zero. We are now in executive session.